Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, September 7th, and we will begin with our public statement read by Commissioner Githens.
We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. We have an amendment to our agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move that we add item F, which is amendment to the Fulchamp Purchase Agreement.
We have a motion and a second. And that would take us off of having a work session today. All those in favor of adding item F to our agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Next, we have department updates. Do we have Ms. Kelly joining us via Zoom or in person? Look at that. I'm looking at the TV and there you are. Snuck that one in. Say good morning. Good to see you in person.
Thank you. Good morning. The CDC recently approved a new bivalent COVID-19 vaccine. This consists of two parts, one that helps to provide protection against the original COVID-19 strain and one for the Omicron VA 4 and 5. I'm happy to share that the bivalent COVID-19 vaccine boosters are expected to begin arriving at the public health clinic within the next week. Appointments can be made by calling 812-353-3244. Monkeypox vaccines are still available to those at risk and indeed, and IU Health Positive Link is still having vaccination clinics on Tuesdays from 4:30 to 7:00 PM. You can call 812-353-3219 for more information or to schedule an appointment.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Well, first I wanted to thank Ms. Kelly for the Health Department's participation last Friday in Paint the Town Purple. It was very well attended and a joyous kind of celebration.
Also, would you clarify for us how long an individual is supposed to wait to get the new vaccine after their last either vaccine or booster?
Yes, great question. So the bivalent vaccine is only available as a booster following a primary vaccination series and with a two-month interval. So waiting either following the primary series vaccination or the last booster that has been administered.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
My question was answered. Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Thank you. Is there any other department updates? Seeing none. We'll open the floor for public comments. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on our agenda. Each speaker is limited to a total of three minutes of time. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, speaker will hear a tone. And when that tone sounds, you have 30 seconds remaining to give your statement. If you haven't been here before and we don't know you, like Mr. MG, we will ask you to identify whether or not you're a Monroe County resident. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, County Staff. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and a Monroe County resident. Today, I want to commend this body for taking the initiative of using last week's work session to publicly discuss the expansion of the Monroe County Convention Center. The meeting was a convergence of representatives from the County Council, City of Bloomington, Common Council, and the Mayor's Office. It would have been overly optimistic to expect every matter to be ironed out in less than one hour. However, it was a step in the right direction, witnessing the city and county officials collaborating in this session provided real evidence of how government can work effectively, creating momentum moving forward. Ultimately, this is about fulfilling a commitment made to the residents here to expand the convention center after the County Council enacted the tax in 2017. The chamber remains optimistic that agreement will come to fruition. We appreciate your due diligence and look forward to future discussions. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer public comment for an item not on our agenda? Let's see, anyone on the Zoom screen? TSD, can you make sure that attendees are on the screen for us rather than panelists? Thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right. We will now move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from August 31st, 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, edits? I sent a few over earlier.
I sent one earlier. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes for August 31st, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, September 7th, 2022, and payroll September 9th, 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. Letler here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The accounts payable for September 7th, 2022 is $1,250,951.42. And for payroll for September 9th, 2022, it is $1,760,063.87.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions, Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Is there any public comments on this item? Come to the podium in Nat U Hill or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket, accounts payable September 7th, 2022, and payroll September 9th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. We did not receive any reports, so we will move on to new business. Item A, please.
Move approval of Cares Board dispersal of checks to grantees. Fund name, Cares Board/CEO Drug-Free Community Fund Number 1148 in an amount of $44,062.27.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. And we can start with Mr. Malone, maybe, or Ms. Muser?
Good morning. I'm actually picking up three for the board for probation and community corrections.
Thank you. All right. So we have a list of the checks. We have treatment at $12,854.09 total. Justice at $12,854.09 total and the same amount for prevention. And the Cares Council, $5,500 total. And we'll have Commissioner Githens will read the names of the recipients. And Ms. Purdy has the checks over there for you to pick up if you're here to do so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Under the justice category, for the Monroe County Drug Treatment Court, for urine drug screens, $1,727.62. In Monroe County Probation Department or Community Corrections, there are journals, the amount of $1,872.10. For new leaf, new life, or inside the jail, the amount of $4,639.10. New leaf, new life for outside the jail, a different program, $4,615.27. Under the treatment/intervention category, Amethyst House Inc. for their men's program, $4,267.98. Also to Amethyst House Inc. for their women's program, same amount of $4,267.98. And for Courage to Change, or Courage to Change, $4,318.13. Under the prevention category, to Big Brothers, Big Sisters for the community-based one-to-one program, For Beacon, for the Crawford Homes program, $4,282.62. And to Indiana Recovery Alliance, for Indiana Recovery Alliance, $4,299.84. And the admin cost of $5,500.
Thank you so much. All right. Any public comments on this item? All those, I don't know that we need to do an approval, but let's go ahead and do one. All those in favor of approving the Cares Board dispersal of checks to grantees signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of memorandum of agreements for disaster staging areas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have Mr. Baker here from Emergency Management. Good morning.
Morning. Name's Justin Baker. I'm with Emergency Management. The Emergency Management Department has established two memorandums of agreements for disaster staging areas for two healthcare facilities within the county. The facilities are the Bloomington Legionals Hospital, Rehabilitation Hospital, and the Bloomington Advanced Surgery Center. Both agreements have been accepted and signed by the facilities. We are seeking the approval of these staging areas. The Board of Commissioners wants to prove these disasters, these disaster staging areas will help by assistance during the recovery stage of the disaster by being a designated location where the public can go when needed.
Thank you. Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I appreciate the Emergency Management Department being proactive about this.
Yeah, really smart. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is a wonderful thing for the community. How will people find where these stations are?
We will post it on social media and also let the media know when we activate it and also go through the Monroe County Work System.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Either come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on the Zoom screen. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the memorandum of agreements for disaster staging areas signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of multi-hazard mitigation plan update.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Baker?
Okay. The Emergency Management Office is also seeking approval to use Christopher Burks, which is an engineering company, consulting company in Indianapolis. They also have a Columbus office too in Indiana. They will be, if accepted, they will be out contract for the multi-hazard mitigation plan, which is required by FEMA to receive any funding after disaster happens locally. Our current plan expires September next year. So once we get this accepted, we will start working on it through our planning committees with every jurisdiction in this county. We'll have a representative come to the office and we'll start with the mitigation plan.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
It's incredible how far in advance one has to plan with these things.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, being a member of the Emergency Management Commission, I kind of thought we had just done this.
So is there a plan to do some sort of, once the plans are moving forward, is there an opportunity to do a tabletop exercise or anything like that with all of the agencies involved?
Yeah, that's something I can possibly plan ahead and get going.
Okay. I think that would be really useful. I don't think we've done one in years. So I think that would be really useful to do. Thank you so much for bringing this forward. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the multi-hazard mitigation plan update signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Move approval of Indiana Department of Health Immunization Grant. Fund name, IMINAM Long-Term COVID Fund Number 8181 in a grant amount of $272,664.20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Kelly? Good morning again.
So this request is for an extension of the original grant for immunization funding. This is conducted through our public health clinic partnership with IU Health. These funds have helped to support COVID-19 outreach and vaccination efforts, particularly for hard-to-reach populations. Vaccination clinics at area schools with the lowest vaccination coverages has been another positive outcome of this funding. We have been able to provide increased access to vaccines through evening and weekend hours as well. We fully expect to continue seeing these positive outcomes through the extension of this funding.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Thank you for getting the grant.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Just also, thank you.
Yeah, we're really, really grateful and I know the community is grateful as well. This is a big step. So thank you so much for this. I know it's a lot to organize. This is just the first part of many. So thank you for that in advance for you and your staff. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Indiana Department of Health Immunization Grant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much. All right. We'll move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of ordinance 2022-25, Young Trucking Construction Shop Rezone.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Myers joining us via Zoom. Good morning.
Hello. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. I will go ahead and begin this presentation here. All right. This is the Young Trucking Construction Shop Rezone from IG to HI. It's located in Richland Township, Section 36. It's 8.5 acres. And the address is 1238 North Loesch Road. So here we are at the Board of Commissioners meeting. So it's been to the Plan Review Committee as well as the Plan Commission. Plan Review Committee met on May 12th to discuss this petition and voted 5 to 0 to forward with a positive recommendation, following the recommendations and concerns being that the petitioner limits some of the uses on the property that are currently permitted under the HI zone by way of written commitment. And there is discussion on some of those items for uses to be limited. The Plan Commission on August 2nd voted 6 to 1 to forward with a positive recommendation with the following conditions. One, the petitioner record a written commitment limiting the uses in the heavy industrial zone district to exclude the following. That's central garbage/rubbish removal, road garbage/rubbish removal, wastewater treatment facility, water treatment facility, agricultural sale barn, and bottled gas storage/distribution. And then number two, the petitioner record a written commitment to preserve vegetation on the west side of the property. Now, in the Plan Commission meetings, there was a lot of discussion about another use of concern, and that was rock crushing. So although this condition of approval from the Plan Commission does not state rock crushing, the petitioner has went ahead and included in their written commitment the limiting the use of rock crushing as well. And I will get to that later in this presentation. Here's a bit of summary and background for the property. It is a zoning map amendment to rezone from general industrial to heavy industrial. The purposes of this rezone request is to establish the use of a trucking terminal. Trucking terminal is not a permitted use in the IG zone. It is permitted in the HI zone, however. And the determination of trucking terminal based on the description of the use by the petitioner was determined by planning staff under the use determination process. And the petitioner actually appealed that determination. And that went to the Board of Zoning Appeals on February 2nd, 2022, where the Board of Zoning Appeals upheld the Plan Department's determination that the described use classifies as a trucking terminal. Chapter 802 defines trucking terminal as the following. A terminal facility used by highway-type property-carrying vehicles, which may include truck maintenance facilities. And it is subject to Special Condition 31 of Chapter 802, which states site shall be screened with landscaping or an opaque fence or wall to a height of at least six feet. Now, the next step for the petitioner, if the rezone were to be approved to the HI district, would be to file a commercial site plan. And a lot of the details surrounding preservation, landscaping, parking, grading, paving, all those sorts of things would come up through the commercial site plan process, which is a staff-level review. Here we have the location map. 1238 North Loesch Road, as well as the slope map here. As you'll note, the property is very flat, only a few little areas that exhibit slopes greater than 15%. And you'll note in this top right-hand corner or northeast corner, this slopes that you see are actually a part of a detention area, stormwater detention area that came about through the subdivision process and the creation of this subdivision that this property is a part of. Current zoning map, again, is IG Conference of Plan as it designated as MCOA employment. Here we have the subdivision that I was speaking on, the Curry and Loesch Minor Subdivision. The subject property is Lot Number 3. And if you note in the top right-hand corner, there is that detention area that is designated. Additionally, there is a drainage unit that extends to the south of the property coming from or to the detention area. And actually, it was a part of the planning staff's review that was revealed that the petitioner or the existing property owner actually, under a grading permit application, approved grading permit application, did some grading on the site that actually encroached into this drainage unit. And through the site plan process, and this process, planning staff is working with the property owner and petitioner to remedy that situation to make sure the stormwater drainage is adequate on-site. Here is a topographic survey of the property. You'll note that this is the gravel area, or the paved, excuse me, the graded area that the petitioner, property owner, engaged in under the approved grading permit that did encroach into this drainage unit here in the orange. And there's other items on this survey that we can take note of. The drainage area, as well as some of the slopes that you can see, and setbacks, that sort of thing for the current zone and the property itself. Here we have some on-the-ground photography. This is that site that was graded. More photographs of the petition site here. And just kind of getting an idea of the layout of the site on the ground. This tree line here that you see is actually towards Loesch Road, with this driveway that goes out to connect to a stop sign right there. You can see in the background. Here we have the petitioner's letter for the letters to the Plan Commission, essentially stating their request to rezone the property and some extra details regarding the background of the property. The petitioner also does state some nearby businesses and offers some ideas of how they match with the character of the area. This is an image of the Mobile Rock Crushing Unit that gathered a lot of discussion during the Plan Commission meetings. Essentially, the property owner was talking about using this equipment on-site occasionally. Most of the time, this equipment goes to the project site. But they did originally want to have some flexibility on doing some rock crushing on their petition site itself. However, after the Plan Commission meeting and the recommendation was made, the petitioner actually came to planning staff with an amended written commitment that stated that they will be limiting the use of rock crushing on this petition site in addition to the other ones that were previously stated. So here is that first commitment that we received stating the list of uses that would be limited. And then this is the updated written commitment that also talks about rock crushing. There is also some language on here about the vegetation preservation for this property. And there's been some back and forth between planning staff as well during the work session. Commissioners stated they wanted to have this language cleaned up a bit. So they did offer some changes to this to make it a little bit more accommodating to themselves as well as concerns for preserving this location. Here is the proposed site plan. So they're not bound to this design at all, but it is at least good to have as a reference to what they intend to construct on the property if the rezone were to be approved. Then we can come back to this if we'd like. And you can also ask any questions to the petitioner, petitioner's representatives regarding this plan. Here I have the permitted uses in IG zone as well as the permitted uses in HI zone. All the stars you see on the IG zone use table, those are uses that are either exactly the same or very similar to uses that are already permitted in the HI zone district. And we can come back to this if we want to review it as well. Overall, staff recommended forwarding a positive recommendation to the Board of Commissioners based on the findings and facts and compatibility with Monroe County Conference of Plan, subject to the following condition. The petitioner record a written commitment limiting some of the uses on the subject property that are normally permitted under the HI zone district, as recommended by the Monroe County Plan Review Committee. And as I stated before, the Plan Commission added this condition of approval, specifically stating which uses that they wanted to limit, as well as adding that additional commitments regarding the preservation of that tree line on the western side of the property. I will now take any questions.
Commissioner Githens? So that was pretty fast. I'm a little confused about the rock crushing. Well, we don't have a copy of the second recorded commitment in our packet.
I thought that I had included that updated version with the formal session packet. I apologize if that's not the case.
Yeah, it's not. So and we have we have subtitles on our screen that make it impossible for us to read your slide. So if TSD can take the subtitles off for us, that'll help. Thank you. Okay, so this includes the items from the previous recorded commitment regarding public and semi-public retail wholesale trade. And then they also added rock crushing, right? And then in vegetation preservation, existing vegetation along the west property line of the above described, real estate shall be I can't read that, something from clearing.
Preserved.
Preserve. Yeah, you got it on your screen. And then the two pieces that are exempt from that is removal of invasive plant, shrub, and tree species, removal of dead or fallen trees. Isn't this part normally of your design phase that goes through the planning department?
Yes, so we do have buffer yard and streetscape requirements. However, based on the written commitment or the condition of approval from the uh, from the plan commission, it seems that the nature of that was to preserve as much of that area as possible. Um, so normally plant, um, planning staff's um, guidelines for chapter eight thirty uh, would only allow for preservation of a certain area. Um, it might end up being just, you know, a strip of land that uh, meets the the requirements for streetscape um, or buffer yard, whatever. Um, it'd probably be streetscape since it's on Loesch Road. Um, so this commitment, I believe, is going a little bit further in that, um, and they are um, suggesting or committing to preserving an area of a hundred feet in width um, along the entire west property line. Subject to these few items that they would like to do in that preservation area.
Okay, so this is stricter.
Yes.
Okay. Other questions?
I just wanted to know what was in the chat also. I don't, don't know if that pertains to what we're seeing. No, okay, thanks.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, I um, given the conditions that are, have been added to this, I find that I'm fairly comfortable with it. I would not have wanted the rock crushing at all. I live not far from a rock crusher. And the amount of dust is rather incredible. And I'm very pleased that that uh, western strip of trees is going to be um, preserved. The, when you actually go across Loesch Road there, that it's a very diversified habitat for wildlife there that has so many ravines that can't really be built on, but it, I think saving those trees will make a big difference.
Great, thank you. Uh, anything else? Other comments or questions? And then we'll.
I like the fact that they've specified the width for the trees. I really do.
It's not specified. Um, it's um, it doesn't say a hundred feet. Oh, yeah, it does say a hundred feet. Yep, you're right, it does. It does on the end of it. Yep, thank you so much, Drew. Okay, uh, we'll hear from the petitioner, petitioner's representative.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, I'm Chelsea Moss with Avery Moss Design Group. I represent the petitioner um, with Arrow Properties. Um, I just wanted to kind of touch on a few things. Um, we're uh, we did, so we did include the, the hundred foot, I'm sorry. Saw that, and basically we left those couple provisions in there, um, just so that we don't get in a pickle down the road if invasives are found in there, or we have trees go down. We want to make sure we have um, that ability and it's, it's not tied up in this. Um, that is an area that he was planning on preserving anyways. Um, and we will be putting a, in addition to the buffering, landscape buffering along the north line, we'll also be including a berm along the entire north line, so the, about a six-foot-high berm in, in addition to the landscaping. So this will be um, pretty unnoticeable from Loesch or from Vernal. Um, we're gonna kind of keep it tucked away, hidden back there. But they are um, eager to get started on this, so our, our intent is with your approval to, to start going through the design process with planning department and working closely with them on that. So, thank you. Anything from my colleagues for the petitioner's representative? Questions?
I'll just, I'll just note that there um, was a neighboring business that had come in during the plan commission meeting and uh, it's a software company that, that is a subcontractor from Crane, and they were really concerned about the noise and the dust and all of that. And then clearly, there's a truck terminal on the other side of the property, so that's not that unusual um, for that area, but, but the rock crushing was important. So we appreciate the give on that. That was, that was really helpful.
Yes, and I, I believe my client's already been kind of talking to them and kind of making sure everybody's on the same page as good neighbors um, already since that meeting, so.
That's good news. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come up to the podium. Okay, seeing none, I'll come back for any final comments. Some questions, comments or questions? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and um, take our vote on this. Uh, all those in favor of approving ordinance twenty-two-two-two-five, the Young Trucking Construction Shop Rezone, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you. And we have item F, please.
Move to approve amendment to Fullerton Pike Purchase Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is a fairly simple amendment. Um, in our document, we had referenced the need for two appraisals twice. Um, and one of those caused some confusion about what the, the final purchase price would be, so we're asking the removal of that so that the final purchase price is ten million, twenty thousand dollars. If you look further down, there is still a statement that if we don't get the two appraisals to be at least that much, the average of the two as required by state code, then we, we can pull out of, then we have, we can and would therefore legally have to pull out of that. So it's just clarifying that.
So we're still following state code?
Yes.
That's a good thing. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens?
Yeah, thanks. We're good.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, uh, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of amending the Fullerton Pike Purchase Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Um, do we have any appointments today? We don't, do we? All right, no appointments today. We do a few announcements. Um, just a reminder uh, that now that we've taken care of the work session business, we will not be having a work session today. Uh, we are also not meeting next week, the fourteenth, but we'll be back on the twenty-first. We do have a survey online for the uh, state and local funding relating to ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act money. And uh, this is available on our website at co.monroe.in.us where you're asked to provide some uh, sense of your priorities for spending, and that will help us make some uh, decisions along with the county council to move forward on a full list of projects, uh, but we want to get public input. And uh, we're hopeful that there will also be a uh, meeting with uh, between the commissioners and council together, a joint meeting um, some evening um, after budgets are done to uh, hear from the public as well. So there'll be other options for you to provide input. So please participate in the survey. We need to hear from you. We need to know what you think. We do have office hours six times a month. You can join individually or as a group. Go to co.monroe.in.us and check the calendar to see uh, that information. And um, we are always accepting applications for boards and commissions. Go to our website uh, and do a search. And there is uh, one more day of the blood drive on Friday this week, uh, ten AM to three PM at IV Tech. Go to redcross.org. I don't know if there are appointments available, but that's where you can check. There are going to be uh, and there, there will be another blood drive in October and one uh, day in November as well. So, uh, did you want to add anything else?
I was out at the blood drive yesterday and the Red Cross, as usual, was very, very efficient. How they handled things.
Yeah. Uh, there is the Sam Kinyonis uh, talk at the Busker Chumley Theater on September thirteenth, seven PM to discuss his latest book, The Least of Us and America in the Time of Fentanyl and Meth. And the effect it has on communities. Doors open at six-thirty. You can go to buskerchumley.org to get your free ticket. So thank you to SUDAC for organizing that. It's gonna be very, it's gonna be a really insightful uh, talk. We're looking forward to it. Uh, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.